Welcome and good evening, everyone. As I call the regular school board meeting of independent school district number eight eight two to order on Monday, April seventh, five P. M. Please note that we are missing Mary Bartel tonight, this evening. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And needing approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Alright, we have no citizen comments tonight that are registered, so we will move on to fiscal stability. We are gonna do consent agenda of items A and B. This, we do need approval on.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. The next item on our agenda under fiscal stability is staff reduction. So I just wanna note before we go through this that it's a heavy topic and one of the least fun things we have to do here as board members. We're looking at a projected shortfall of two million dollars of budget cuts. But we know it's not just numbers, there are actual faces, people, relationships that have an impact on our district and our community. So decisions like this are not made lightly within our district. And all of us board members, administrators, and leaders in our district, we carry this burden with us. So this again is not the funnest thing that we have to do, but it is our commitment to continue making the best decisions we can to keep our district moving forward and give the best experience we can to our students. So with that said, we have some resolutions to be read for staff reductions.
Whereas those individuals presented accordingly on the meeting agenda are probationary teachers in independent district number eighty-two, be it resolved by the school board of independent district number eighty-two that pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five. In the district master agreement, the teaching contracts of those presented probationary teachers in independent district number eighty-two shall be non-renewed at the end of two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year effective June sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Moving to the second resolution.
Whereas those individuals presented accordingly on the meeting agenda are probationary title one teachers in the independent district number eighty-two, be it resolved by the school board of independent district number eighty-two that pursuant to the Minnesota statute one twenty-two A point four zero subdivision five and the district master agreement, the teaching contracts of those presented probationary title one teachers in the independent district number eighty-two shall be not, shall be non-renewed at the end of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year effective June sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
By Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. We will now move on to collaborative connections. First item is resolution of acceptance of gifts with Superintendent Wilson.
Alright, thank you, Chair Seben. We have four donors to bring forward here tonight. The first one is the Monticello Women of Today, and they have donated one thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars to the Rally to Read, the high school library portion of that committee that's been working around the district and community. And then also Mike and Sue Benedetto donated five hundred dollars also to the Rally to Read High School Library portion of that community committee. Aspen Tech, one thousand dollars for the Monty Pythons Robotics Team. I'd like to bring that one forward to you, and we'll hear a little bit from the Monty Pythons on their season upcoming here. And then the last one, Moon Motorsports, for five hundred dollars going to a, as a fishing team sponsorship. So I bring these forward to you today in hopes that we continue to grow these amazing programs and that we couldn't do so without the community support.
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School Board number eighty-two to gratefully accept the following donation. One thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars for Rally to Read program. Mike and Sue Benedetto, five hundred dollars for Rally to Read program. Aspen Tech, one thousand dollars for Monty Python Robotics Team. And Moon Motorsports, five hundred dollars for fishing team sponsorship.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. We are now on to our student representative report, so please help me to the podium. Welcome William, Willa Sharmar. And Alekshas Thompson.
Well, thank you for having us here. Board members, we'd just like to give you kind of an update on what's going on in the high school right now, what we have to look forward to and some accomplishments that we've had. First, looking back, we had big success across the board with winter sports. One of the big highlights that you probably heard about was our girls' basketball team making it to state. They did an incredible job throughout the whole season and we're super proud of how they represented us out there. But looking ahead, we have spring sports have all kicked off. We have, at least for lacrosse, home openers on Saturday, one o'clock, so be there. Otherwise, I know boys' lacrosse is kicking it off this week. I know tennis had their first match yesterday. And track and field had their first indoor meet last week and did an incredible job, so we are super excited about all the successes to come.
Good evening, board members. We recently had a spring week, which have, which had a really great start and was really enjoyable. Starting off, we had fun dress-up themes, which many of the students did participate, which many of the students did participate in. And it was really settling. And moving forward, later on that Friday, there was a student versus staff basketball game, which was really enjoyable. I was a coach for the students. I was a coach for the students.
Did you win?
Um, let's see. Ms. Lightner was the MVP in that, going forward. Let's just say numbers don't matter, but the staff did end up taking the win over the students. Congratulations to them and congratulations to our students as well. We were, we did a fantastic job overall. Unified week, last week, we brought awareness to our unified program. Dress-up days were Monday Comfy Day, Tuesday Jersey Day, Wednesday Blue Day representing Autism Awareness Day, and Thursday was Hat Day. Friday, which was Live Unified Church Day, which was, students were challenged to spread kindness. And also Unified also will be taking their executive board to the third session of a leadership conference, empowering future leaders.
And to end off that unified week, we held a polar plunge, which is something hopefully everyone gets to experience at least once in their life. It was my first time this year. You have to donate fifteen or fifty dollars to be able to jump. The whole school donated, as of last Friday, over nineteen thousand dollars, which is a great success. And I just have to say, it was a great time. We had a lot of fun. We had over a hundred and twenty kids jump. If you didn't wanna jump, you could throw a chicken in the water, but I did jump. It was very cold, but such a great opportunity. Another update is we have prom coming up on May third. Grand March will be at two thirty and at four o'clock. The dance will be hosted at River City Extreme, and tickets have gone on sale. I would say there were plenty of kids up at the school by about five thirty last week waiting to buy tickets, so it was very exciting and, yeah.
Next, we have the testing update for MCA, ACT, and AP tests, which are all on schedule four. Juniors recently took the ACT test on March twentieth, and April and May are very busy months for the MCAs and AP tests, which will recently be taking place and, yeah.
And then kind of a final announcement is that we will have concerts from choir, band, and orchestra, so keep an eye out for those. It's a great way to see all the accomplishments that students have had. I know me being a part of the orchestra, it's always really fun to have your spring concert and just to be able to see the progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year.
And also, to shine a light on something that was very fun to be a part of, was the kindness retreat, which took place last week at Pine Wood Elementary, where we went and celebrated, well, not necessarily celebrated, but had a very fun interaction with fourth graders through kindness and teaching kindness and just learning and growing overall. Yeah, just learning and growing overall and spreading kindness with fourth graders was a very fun interaction provided by Mr. Ben Langquist at the high school. And the program was oriented by Youth Frontiers, which is very fun. Also, in May, a number of seniors will also be headed over to Monticello Middle School to meet with eighth grader students for a Q and A session regarding life at Monticello High School, and they will create a list of questions in their advisory classes for the seniors to answer them. Basically like a senior mentor and a freshman seminar. Something similar to a course we offer this year as well. And that wraps up our.
That wraps it up. Just graduation coming up and people are pretty excited for that. So, yeah. Any questions?
I just have one, like, just the unified, the money that was raised, it goes to Special Olympics. I just thought if somebody, just making sure that everybody knew where that went, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. And it was also really cool. Sports were able to sign up as a team, and so some of your donations actually came back to the team, so I jumped with my lacrosse team, which is really cool. And I think we had track, wrestling, football, boys and girls basketball. It was just across the board. There was incredible participation from students.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, now we're excited for another fun presentation. Next up is the Mighty Pythons Robotics Team presentation. Please help me welcome up to the podium coaches Leann Gertz and Gabe, sorry if I pronounce it wrong, and the students, which I'll all introduce themselves as you come up.
Well, hello. We're the Monty Pythons. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. My name is Jordy Gertz. I'm a junior in high school as well as a captain of the team. Here with me, I have a few of my teammates and coaches up, and we're going to do a recap of our season that we just wrapped up. So I believe we should have a slideshow. Here we go. So, the recap for the two thousand twenty-five season. Can we go to the beginning? Technical difficulties, one minute here. Alright, so if we can go to our first slide. Awesome. We got a substitute tech guy tonight, so thank you, Dawson. Alright. So, this is a quick recap for our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five season. If we can go to the next slide. So, our season, typically we start the first week of January. That's when the overarching group that hosts this tournament kinda shows the challenges for that year. And so in the past, we have started that week as a team. This year, we took a different aspect, took a different route, and we started in October. So UMC here in Monticello had a open house showcase where local teams were able to show off the previous season's robot, and that was a great way for some of our incoming freshmen to kinda see what robotics is all about. Also in October, the Big Lake High School hosted the conference championship, which was basically a tournament from the last season hosted locally for these teams around us, just to kinda give one last hooray for the last season. Through November, our coaches were collaborating with other coaches in the central Minnesota area, in what we call the hub, and that's basically where different teams work together in robotics world to just make sure everyone can be successful. December, we went to Jumpstart, and that was hosted at the St. Cloud State University. That was put on by the Becker team, and many local teams, again, were able to participate in that, so we were able to take different classes and seminars, learn about the different parts of the robotics world. In January, we started our season, so that's where the challenges for the year were released, and we were able to start our build season. On the first day that the challenges were released, we, as a team, were able to join up with the Big Lake team, and we collaborated in our brainstorming with them that day. In February, again through the hub that we are in, St. Michael hosted the spec check, which means if you had a robot at that time that was being worked on, you could get it inspected for when you go to an actual competition and you know if everything's up to code and legal. We also had two different Week Zero events. That is preseason events to the actual tournaments. One was hosted in Becker and one was hosted in Wilmer. We were very successful at those. Nothing was counted for or against us, but it was just really good practice and teamwork as we got to see what a actual tournament would look like for the season. Then in March, we were able to have our regional competition where we went up to North Dakota, and as a team, we had a great time, and we'll get into that a little deeper here in a bit. Alright, so I'm gonna show you guys a quick recap video, so if we can go to the next slide, it will play. So this video's gonna have different pictures that we took throughout our season, as well as what events they were taking at. Awesome. So that was just a quick look at this past season. So, heading into our regional competition, we were hoping for thirty-ninth place out of fifty-five teams. And the reason for that is, in the past, we've been at the bottom. And the reason for that is in the past, we've been at the bottom of the leaderboard throughout our competition. And so we wanted big goals, uh but we didn't want to take on something too big right away. And so we figured if we shot for the top two-thirds, that would be a good goal for ourselves. When in actuality, we ended up placing sixth place out of fifty-two teams at the competition. So the question you might be asking is how did we make it to sixth place? So one of the biggest reasons we were able to be as successful as we were because of our hub conference. So the local teams all around us, uh specifically Big Lake, Becker, STMA and Recorey, all uh were super generous, uh whether they were opening up their space for us to come and they would help us or we could bring things that we needed to work on. Or they would send over uh coaches and students to our space and they would help us, uh whether it's actually building or if we need help with ideas or figuring out kinda the materials that we have and what we can work with. Uh, all of that was super helpful. We had a lot of grit. There were a lot of things that we didn't know as a team. We have a lot of freshmen and learning was throughout the season. And so uh our team did a great job sitting down and just kinda learning whatever thing is. Uh, and we're successful because of that. And through that, we had great teamwork uh with many different opportunities and events that we were able to go to. Uh, as a team, we were always together and we got along and got things done. So through this uh through the season, we were able to acquire many sponsors. Uh, these are important because uh many things in the robotics world cost a lot of money. And so we wouldn't be able to do what we do without of the generosity of our sponsors. So our expenses this season uh are listed out here. Uh, in order to be registered as a team and get one regional tournament is going to cost you six thousand dollars. Uh, on top of that, each competition that you want to go to uh is gonna cost another thousand dollars. And we were only able to do the one because of our budget. Other than the registration, equipment went to about fifteen hundred of our dollars just to uh buy different uh materials and tools. And preseason tournaments that we went to such as the week zero events uh totaled to about five hundred seventy-five dollars. Then when we were going to North Dakota across hotels and transportation, we spent about uh twenty-eight hundred dollars, leaving the total to about almost eleven thousand dollars, which is great because we raised through our sponsors over fourteen thousand dollars this year. So what's next? Through the summer, we're going to continue working. There's still some uh postseason events. And so we're going to add something on the robot called a climber and which is going to allow us to score more points in the tournament uh when we lift it up off the ground with its own apparatus. Also, uh we are going to shoot for something called swerve drive. And right now, our robot has something called tank drive. Is it ready to drive? Not yet? Okay, so we have what's called tank drive, which means you can only drive in the direction that your robot is facing. But with swerve drive, although expensive, uh it's and kinda complicated, uh we will be able to uh move faster and more smooth, which will allow us to be more efficient when we're on the field. Uh, we have the robot here and we're gonna see if we can give you guys a live demonstration. Just gotta get a couple of things plugged in, but everything should be working. We did beat up on it too much. So you'll see here, uh we have got our team members just jumping right in there. Uh, a lot of them are what we call our pit crew. Uh, and they at the competition are in charge of making sure everything's ready to go. And if something breaks, they're right on it, ready to help.
And when the coaches are in charge, everything gets left behind. So that's what happened today. So these kids have just jumped in. Um, other teams have between five, fifteen, twenty mentors. Uh, they have the three of us. We don't program. This is solid student-built, student-programmed robot. And we couldn't be more proud of them.
Alright, while they get that going, uh I'll talk about what's next. So a big part of robotics is community impact. Uh, as the teams are working on teamwork and getting together uh through robotics, we're also working on helping out in our community. So this summer at our, at the Riverfest Walk and Roll Event, uh we will be uh participating, giving uh people opportunities to kinda see what robotics is all about and probably handing out candy or something. Uh, similarly, we're gonna be uh teaming up with the Big Lake team for the Riverfest Parade. And in return, we will also go with them for their Spud Fest Parade. And so that's just to uh reach out to the community, uh allow people to kinda see what we're doing and how closely we work with the other teams. Also this summer, we are going to be hosting a community ed class where we allow elementary-age students to get a hands-on experience in the world of robotics. So we have some experiments planned out and that's going to be an awesome experience. Alright, uh it looks like we're still going. So we have a quick video on what the video or uh what the robot is able to do in action. And so uh this was taken at the Becker Field. They have a STEM center with a full-size field setup. And so uh we went over there and I was flying the drone around so I could show you guys what exactly this thing can do. Alright, before we get to questions, uh it looks like we've got some ethernet cord going on here. So we can hardwire into the robot so we can get this thing demonstrating for you guys because it is really cool to see uh what our team has put together this year. Shout out to Mr. Isaac. He is our team tech guy and programmer. And so he is figuring things out for us. So Piper, do you wanna hold up the uh, this is one of the game pieces. So this is called the coral. And on a field during a match, uh there's going to be plenty of these being uh thrown around and moved around. But the goal is to stack them on top of these different posts. Um, because of our experience, we weren't able to do uh some of the more uh difficult things to do. But there is a uh simpler route that we could take. And so we designed our robot to be able to uh do one thing, but do it well. Don't wanna put it back in there.
Still having some technical difficulties.
Well, while they're working on that, I guess we can fill in the the questions. Um, I just wanna say I, it it's hard to understate how impactful these skills are that'll serve you guys in your future and how great of a program this is. Um, there, this is a lot harder than people give it credit for. Um, so it's wonderful that you guys have a great teamwork and your your sponsors, everyone helping you to get as high as you did in the scores. Uh, looking to a great future. Um, and then it's exciting that you're introducing it to younger uh kids as well. Um, from the control side, who's doing the programming?
So our programming is uh taken up by Mr. Isaac here. Uh, he also has another buddy that does it with him, Arnav Gupta. Uh, the two of them, uh because we don't have any mentors that are able to help us with programming, uh as freshmen this year, they took it upon themselves to learn all of it. And uh so we'll just kinda sit them down with the computer and like twenty minutes later, they'll come back with uh some new programming. And it is just incredible to see uh what the two of them have been able to accomplish with no uh guidance or leadership.
Yeah, are are you guys just using Raspberry Pis or what's, what are you using to control? No, are they for the controller?
So uh Target actually sponsored us with some controllers this year. And so they're just uh Xbox controllers, uh which through programming, they configured to control the different aspects of our robot. Also, they're running all of our program through a uh computer that UMC had sponsored to us last year. And so uh many of the parts that we use most frequently are actually uh individual items given to us by sponsors.
Then what language are you guys programming in? Python or Java? Okay.
I know people always ask, even though we're the Monty Pythons, no, we don't use Python.
Use Python to do it, but okay. Alright.
So this is essentially what we can do. Um, although other teams can do uh all sorts of uh maneuvering and uh different capabilities of like extensions and elevators, uh we're able to do uh one thing where we drop it at a low level. But because our drivers are super awesome, they've become super consistent. And part of that is the reason that we were able to climb the ranks uh throughout our matches. Willa, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering, so how does scoring work in these competitions? Like you said, there are different things. Like, is it like you do one thing and that's like five points or how does that work?
Yeah, so uh point-wise, there are so many different things going on. But a typical match is gonna be about two and a half minutes long. The first fifteen seconds are completely autonomous. And what that means is that programmers have to uh make a code for the robot to run. So they start in the same zone. And if they leave the zone itself, you can get points for that. Uh, and then there's different game pieces that you can place on different levels of a structure. And the higher up you go, the more points you can get. So the lowest level is going to get you two points. And then as you go up, it's three, four and five. Also, we have, there's these sixteen-inch dodgeballs. And so they're super hard to work with, but some teams were able to uh figure out how to manipulate those. And you could score tho- those either by shooting them into a basket up high or putting them in a slot down low, each worth four points. Uh, and then at the end, like we said, we're going to go for a climber. So around the last twenty seconds of the match, uh robots are going to rush to a middle uh structure with three, uh they call them cages. And there's these structures hanging by a chain off the ground. And if you can uh with an apparatus on the robot, use that to propel your robot up into the air and hold it there, you are going to get different amount of points depending how close to the ground you can get. Uh, so you can either park it for two points. Uh, there's one three inches off the ground. So if you get your robot off of that, that's twelve points. Or there's one about three feet in the air. And so because that one's a little easier to do, that's only six points. And so throughout game pieces and uh different ways that you can maneuver the robot, that's how you're going to get points.
Yeah, and you said that they code like right away. So are you coming in with a ba- a blank slate every time and they code that? Or is there, did I mishear that?
So uh oftentimes, uh you can reuse code. So each individual match, you can reuse the same code. Uh, but year to year, you're probably gonna have to change some values. You might be able to uh keep some of the structure that you had previously. Um, but you're gonna have to uh work around like all the different aspects of your robot and the challenges for that year.
Very cool. That's so cool. Yeah.
Okay, so they're going to show you our autonomous, which so for the first fifteen seconds of the game, it is going to drive forward and drop it into a trough, uh which would also score us points. And a simple maneuver like that is going to be very successful for your team if you can do it successfully and consistently.
Well, I gotta say, I'm super impressed. I mean, you know, Monticello students are incredible, right? And you guys are but six out of fifty-two this year is absolutely fantastic. So you really are making Monty proud. Um, absolutely love that. I'd love to hear from each one of you, your name and then your favorite part of the program.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Um, I'm Kayden Jones. I'm a junior and probably my favorite part is like of the community that like people, other teams help other teams out.
I'm Piper Matt Herple. I'm a freshman and just being able to use my hands and build something that I know will help in one way or another.
I'm Ella Miller and it was just like really a fun experience just to see all of us go through this. And then like it's a new experience because it's my first year. And like placing sixth my first year and everyone that's a freshman and it's their first year. It's like a super exciting moment because like I know a bunch of us are like, well, what are we gonna do now? Because like a bunch of spring sports are going on, but robotics is still kind of a year-round sport. So we're kind of like, well, we have to like wait a little bit until the spring sports die down and then we can jump back into it in the summer and we can get those swerve drive in.
I'm Hayden Hoker and my favorite part has just been learning so much about so many different things. I've explored all the different areas, coding and building and lots of artsy stuff too goes into it. And yeah, that's my favorite part.
I'm Isaac Miles. Um, I'm learning code this year. Um, probably my favorite part is the other teams helping us with a lot of the coding stuff because next year we would need a lot for swerve drive.
I was gonna say, are you guys already preparing on how you're gonna hit number one next year?
We're starting, we're starting the whole platform over. So it's gonna take a lot of work. We're starting it.
I was wondering about those collaborative partners that you had. Uh, you mentioned um St. Michael, Big Lake, Becker. How'd they look at you when you guys soared, you know, so high in the tournament? How is that received?
So uh we were up in North Dakota and we were in uh communication with all these different teams. And it was so cool to see um because so many of these teams were cheering us on, even though they weren't at the competition. Uh, they were uh paying attention to uh how we were doing. I know the Big Lake team, they were having some sort of uh STEM outreach with their community. And they actually had a TV up with all of our matches going on. So they were showing how we were doing. Uh, so it was cool for us that they were uh taking an interest, but also cool for them so they could see uh all the hard work with helping us and how it paid off.
That was really cool when a bunch of the teams like sent us like scouting lists and stuff. Because like we've never done alliance captains before and like getting the help from other teams that are in our area, helping us do scouting was a lot of help and stuff.
So uh at the competition, the top eight teams going into the semifinals are able to pick uh two teams to join them uh to complete a three-team alliance for the semifinals. Uh, because we were in sixth place, we were able to uh
Well, we placed seventh in qualifications and then we moved up to alliance six.
Uh, yes, so we were able to uh pick a team to join us, or two teams to join us. Uh, but because we frankly hadn't uh anticipated getting that far. And so uh we had never anticipated uh the idea of having to pick teams. And so we were underprepared, but uh other teams from around our area here uh were eager to hop on the phone with us. And they went through statistics and like prior knowledge. And they were on the phone with us for quite a while.
We were on that phone for like forty-five minutes.
But it paid off. It was super awesome. And then our alliance picks in the end uh were incredible teams. We made some great connections and we had a lot of fun.
That is awesome.
Something I remember is that uh Leann would always come to the pits and mentioned, "We got a new message." And from many different teams. And that was always really cool, just like hear how they were supporting us from all those miles and away. And it was even for my first year, that was just really cool to always see how they were supporting us.
That is awesome. Board members, do we have any other questions? I would just like to say thank you for sharing this today. It's a highlight of the meeting. It's great.
Thank you. It was an awesome opportunity.
Thanks for coming. We look forward to hearing from you next year.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move on to agenda number seven, innovation and leadership. Um, we're gonna do some building programs, shout-outs, starting with Director of Technology, Jason Borgstrom.
Thank you, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. I'm not sure who did the agenda, Devany, but I don't know how I'm gonna follow that.
Tough act to follow.
All right, so I'm just doing a quick staff shout-out. I promise it'll be a lot quicker than last time if you guys remember. I'm shouting out Becky Walker. She's an amazing staff member that I have. She, she's often working behind the scenes as our systems and data integrationist. She ensures the seamless flow of information between a myriad of systems. Her two main systems are Schoology and Infinite Campus, which really important systems for us. Her meticulous work on data interoperability and principle of least privilege helps our users not only get the information they need, but also honor our commitment to data privacy as well. While her contributions are not always visible, their impact is felt through the district daily. We're incredibly grateful for her dedication and expertise in managing these crucial systems. So I like to think of our whole entire tech department as like the offensive line. You don't see us until the quarterback gets smacked and then they're laying on the ground, but Becky's definitely a microcosm of that and she does a phenomenal job and we're lucky to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next is Superintendent Eric Olson.
I have two staff spotlights here tonight and the first one is Mary Olson and she is an ESS here at the Monticello Middle School and I've known Mary for two decades and I have worked with her at multiple schools and in multiple positions. Mary has always given her heart and soul to helping students in every position that she has ever held. Three weeks ago, I just happened to be walking with her right about in that hallway, right about even with this boardroom and we continued on down the hallway and just were talking about life and, and all of a sudden it hit me that she was working well before her day. And so I asked her what she was up to that early morning and she replied, "I have to make sure I am ready for my students." And I just, you know, I'll never forget that comment and how extraordinary Mary Olson is as a person who stands up for kids. And my second spotlight is a message to the school board and it's from a member of the Moose Hockey Association, Danielle Johansson. And she says, "Dear members of the school board, I'm ready to take a moment to recognize the exceptional dedication and hard work of Adam Hoppy, a valued member of the Moose Sherit Custodial and Management Team. I've had the privilege of observing Adam's consistent commitment to maintaining a clean, safe and welcoming environment for all spectators and participants for over 12 years. Adam goes above and beyond his regular duties, always with a positive attitude and a strong work ethic. Whether it's preparing the rink for the start of the day, addressing any issues promptly or offering a friendly word of encouragement, Adam plays an essential role in creating an atmosphere where athletes and families can thrive. The attention to detail and the pride that Adam takes in his work does not go unnoticed. His efforts have a lasting impact on the entire Moose Hockey Community and it is clear that Adam truly cares about the well-being and success of those who step into the rink. On behalf of the Moose Hockey Community, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Adam Hoppy. His hard work and positive attitude make a significant difference every day and I'm grateful for his continued service and dedication to our facility. Thank you."
All right, now moving on to safe and healthy culture. We're gonna bring up Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder, to talk about our insurance appropriation.
All right, good evening, board. My first item is to talk about our insurance claim that resulted from a hailstorm back in July of 2024. We had our insurance provider out and it was determined that we would have close to $7 million in damages that we were awarded with after deductibles. It was about 6.2 million of insurance proceeds given to us. So to ensure transparency and proper financial oversight, the insurance proceeds will be accounted for in a separate fund dedicated to both tracking the money coming in and the money going out for the repairs. And with this process, I also recommend assigning the insurance activity to an assigned fund balance to prevent co-mingling with other district funds. Again, this approach will be, have a clear financial tracking accountability as we move forward through the repairs. So I'm recommending tonight to have the board approve assigning the property insurance activity into a signed fund balance.
Any questions for Tina?
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mark Branson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0 and on to item B.
Yeah, so we have our final look at our budget revisions for this school year, 24-25. All right, I'll hold. All right. So within our district funds, we have many different funds that we keep track of, different things. We have our general fund and within this, our capital projects fund, Fund Five, will be that insurance activity that we'll keep track of separately. And our special ed cooperative, which is in Fund 12, is also part of Fund One when, when the state looks at our overall finances, but for internal purposes, we keep track of them separately. Our food service fund and then also our community service fund combines with the hockey arena when the state sees our funds combined, but separately, internally we keep track of that separately. And then we have our debt service, internal service and OPEB trust fund. So within our timeline, right now is when we take action to approve our final revisions of the current budget, so that's where we are in our budget timeline. So we'll start off with our general fund. Again, it's our main operating fund and this, what I go over first will not include the capital projects fund or the special ed cooperative fund. So taking a look first at our revenues, a lot of this is similar to what was presented in January with the financial forecast. Our local property taxes and state sources are adjusted down with enrollment changes due to students not showing up at the beginning of the school year that we thought they would, so that'll change our property tax levy and our state aids. Federal sources, that increased again with that COPS grant we received last year, about half of that was received and spent and then the remaining half was received and spent in this school year. And then the other category has interest revenue increasing as well as our wellness credit that we were awarded with our health insurance bid. So overall, our revenue budget is going down slightly of $217,000. On the expense side, more changes to our salaries and employee benefits with staffing projections, a lot of that has to do with looking at our subs budgets. There's a lot of increases to add to our sub budgets as well as the leave of absence. So employees are out on leave, we need to cover those with subs as well. And then also our summer term unemployment was a little higher than last summer, but that will have a revenue offset as well. In the remaining categories, purchase services went up, a lot, a large part of that is with our LTFM plan, so it's kind of hard to predict when is it gonna fall in June versus July and August, so a lot of the repairs and maintenance fall under that purchase service category. So a lot of that increases is that, as well as previously mentioned in January, speech services, transportation routes were part of the increase as well. Supply budgets saw a decrease with our technology carryover. We spent our budget ahead of time last year, so some of that carryover is reflected in this year. And then capital outlay, again, just as you saw in revenue, we had to increase the budget activity for that COPS grant. So overall, our expense budget for the general fund is going up almost 1.5 million to 61 and a half million. So what does that mean for our fund balance? It is going down overall, $2 million and that fund balance is broken up into different categories. We have reserve fund balances that have the state restrictions, we have the committed fund balance, that's our severance fund balance, as well as the unassigned fund balance. And so I'm projecting that unassigned to be about 7.2% of that's in comparison to our fund balance policy. Any questions on the general fund before I move on to the capital project fund? So with the capital projects fund, again, we're, we're gonna track, keep track of our insurance proceeds, designated some budget for interest revenue and also the insurance proceed due to that July claim. And then on the expense side, we're starting to get some bids and quotes on the repairs, so we're probably gonna get to like the garage buildings first and work on those and slowly get a plan for our remaining roofs and other things that were damaged during the storm. The fund balance is just going down a little bit with repairs, but again, what is set aside will be used for future repairs. So hopefully the next couple summers, we'll get all that accomplished. Our special ed cooperative fund, this is where the co-op purchases Monticello staff. So on the revenue side, revenue from other districts is increasing due to, on the expense side, revised salary and benefit projections. And then with federal sources, some of that money is being shifted back to the cooperative schools, Becker, Big Lake, Monticello. Due to, on the expense side, we had a Level Four program that we started this year and some of that startup money was spent last year, some of it this year to get it up and running, so we just adjusted that down to account for what was recognized in this school year. But overall, this is a budget neutral fund, it doesn't carry a fund balance, so the revenues and expenses have to add up to zero. Any questions on special ed cooperative? All right. Food service fund, we didn't do too many changes on this fund. We projected total meals to be about 660,000. We'll probably serve more meals than that, but we just kept it the same for now. We did update our commodity entitlement, you'll see this on the revenue side and the expense side to account for the higher entitlement that we'll rec, we'll receive and recognize and also adjusting the à la carte just a little bit. On the expense side, we didn't really change our salary and benefit projections, but we did see more repairs this year. We had some dishwashers go down, we had freezers go down, so a lot more repairs were needed this year. And because of, you know, the dishwashers going down, we have higher paper supply costs due to switching to paper trays to account for when we couldn't clean the trays with our dishwashers. With capital outlay, we had more purchases this year within that fund. We added or bought new cafeteria tables at Eastview and Pinewood. We also redid the Pinewood serving line so students could enter the cafeteria at both ends of the serving line. Some heating cabinets, I think, so a lot of things happening this year with our food service fund. Overall, I mean, we did plan to spend down our fund balance. A lot of schools, their fund balances were about the six-month worth of expenditures as a fund balance limit and the state wants us to get back to the three-month, so we'll be probably a little north of that at the end of this year, again, because I think our meals will come in better than what we had projected. Any questions on food service? Community service fund, so some minor tweaks to the revenue budget as well, taking a look at our levy and state aid and federal entitlements and adjusting those a little bit. The larger change will be in our other revenue for additional programming, different participation and WTA and childcare and also interest revenue that are seeing some increases compared to the original budget. And on the expense side, again, some changes to our benefit, salary and benefit projections, looking at our space chargebacks, making sure those are included in the budget and then just some minor tweaks to supplies and equipment as well. Overall, that fund balance is expected to increase about 100,000 and again, those fund balances are broken down into different categories, so I have what I project those fund balances to be, but we need to continue to watch the school readiness fund balance as that is still in the red, so we gotta do what we can to kind of get that in the right direction or not get any worse. Hockey fund, again, another budget neutral fund. On the revenue side, we added some time for open skate that wasn't in the original budget and then also, which you'll see on the next slide, we have some additional repairs that will need to happen this year, so we will expect money from the Monticello Youth Hockey Association to come up with the deficit that the, that fund might have. So we had repairs this year on the Zamboni and we're also looking to replace the cooling tower in the arena. So again, it's a budget neutral fund, there won't be a balance, so if there is a negative fund balance or deficit in the fund balance, that the hockey association takes care of that. All right, debt service fund, again, just small change with the revised state entitlements on the revenue side, no change in the expenditures as we kind of know our bond payments year over year. But overall, the fund balance will increase about 90,000 to end up just over a million. And then our last fund with budget revisions is our OPEB trust fund, where just again, minor tweaks to the interest revenue and then with the contributions to the trust, a lot of that was with the retiree projections. We also estimated our health insurance increase to be higher than what actually happened, so that was adjusted down for that. And so on the expense side, we see a decrease of that, as similar to that. But our ending fund balance for the OPEB trust will be just under a million. Any questions on the OPEB trust fund? Otherwise, the last slides just have a summary of all the different budgets and the changes on what they will be and again, this is for board approval. Any questions for Tina? This is an action item.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. All right, now I'll bring up to the podium Director of Human Services, Rob Danicker, for first reading of policies. There's quite a list again.
Chair Seben, members of the boards, Superintendent Olson. We have a number of policies for first read tonight, given that they're first read, no action necessary this evening, but we'll review them nonetheless. All right, so the first one, so I should mention just upfront, so the policies that come for first read are the product of policy committee meetings on a monthly basis. The policy committee meets for an hour and 45 minutes, beginning at 3:00 PM on the date of the first board meeting of the month, review policies. Our work right now is centered around our review cycle of policies, we're in the 500s and so that's why most of the policies are in the 500s tonight and then we got into the 600s as well. Excuse me, so first policy for review this evening is student use and parking of motor vehicles, patrols, inspections and searches. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines for use and parking of motor vehicles by students in school district locations to maintain order and discipline in the schools and to protect the health, safety and welfare of students and school personnel. This policy was subject to minor revisions that were proposed by the Minnesota School Board Association and so no, no changes of substance. Any questions on 527? Moving forward, the next one is 533. There are no, well, I'll just read the title first. So this is our wellness policy. The purpose of this policy is to set forth methods that promote student wellness, prevent and reduce childhood obesity and assure... and reduce childhood obesity, and assure that school meals and other food and beverages sold and otherwise made available on a school campus during the school day are consistent and applicable minimum local, state, and federal standards. Maintaining the Monticello School District's health and physical activity curriculum standards in conjunction with this wellness policy will help students reach their full academic and physical potentials and achieve lifelong health and well-being. At a minimum, this policy must meet any state of Minnesota or federal requirements as well. There were no changes to this policy. This was simply brought forward for the policy committee based on our review cycle, but I will entertain any questions that anybody might have about policy 533. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to 534. This is our school meals policy. And the purpose of this policy is to ensure that students receive healthy and nutritious meals through the school district's nutrition program, and that school district employees, families, and students have a shared understanding of expectation regarding meal charges. Originally slated on our policy committee agenda to be review only, the policy committee did decide to make a couple of amendments to this policy, largely around fund balance. And so the intention, moving forward, would be that the fund balance of student accounts must remain in the positive. There will be limited circumstances in where those accounts would be allowed to go negative. And then later on, we cleaned up the notices around collection as well, to be a little bit more in line with MSBA policy models. Any other questions, or any questions on 534?
Yeah.
Yes. So it sounds like there might be a process change in how we allow students to add on to the standard amount or double up their meal request for the day. Does that, we think that's going to affect the systems that are in place with food services?
I'll look to Tina, she can pause on that, but just to clarify that, so the change, currently, the policy reads that when a student balance reaches zero, a student may charge no more than $20, negative $20 to the account. And we're changing that paragraph where that is in place to all à la carte items or second meal purchases are to be prepaid before meal service begins. A student who does not have sufficient funds will not be allowed to charge à la carte items or a second meal until additional money is deposited into the student's account. And so Tina, do you happen to know, does that substantially change the process for food nutrition services and... Laura? No, there you go.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for the assist from Tina Burkholder, Director of Business Services, and Laura Whacker Hansen, Director of Nutrition Services, on the fly. Any other questions on 534? Okay, moving to 535. This is service animals in schools. The purpose of this policy is to establish parameters for the use of service animals by students, employees, and visitors within school buildings and on school grounds. There were some minor changes proposed by MSBA and their model policies. Just to further clarify, in policy, some ADA protections that individuals using service animals do have based on the Americans with Disabilities Act. We'll take any questions on 535? Okay, moving forward to 536. Turning Point ALP Early Graduation. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for early graduation for Turning Point ALP due to student medical, social, emotional, family, or financial obligations and accreditation structure. Students at Turning Point ALP who qualify can be approved to graduate early from the Monticello School District. This policy was reviewed only by the committee. It was recently revised slightly less than a year ago in May of '24, so no changes on 536, but I'll take any questions. Okay, hearing none. We'll go to 537. This is a Monticello-specific policy, so there is not a parent policy, so to speak, in MSBA model, but this 537 is our extreme weather and emergency school closing procedures. The purpose of this policy is to clarify the procedures that will be used in the event that schools must be closed for inclement weather or any other emergency. There are some minor modifications, just to elaborate on the electronic options which may be used for notification, really bring the policy up to 21st century and 2025 kind of operating standards, and then just clarifying that this decision to close a school during the school day will be at the sole discretion of the superintendent. Any other, any questions on 537? Okay, then we move on to 550. Again, this is a Monticello-specific policy as well. This is our, this is simply called bomb threat. The purpose of this policy is to outline the procedure that will be followed by administration, staff, and students in the event of a bomb threat at a school district building. And there was a minor modification to this policy. The term administration was elaborated to say the superintendent or designee will determine whether to partially or fully evacuate a building or cancel classes. Any questions on 550? And for those of us who are children of the 80s, this one was very real in the 80s, bomb threats were a thing. Not so much anymore, thankfully. 551, this is another Monticello-specific policy. This is early admission. And so the purpose of this policy is as follows, this policy applies to parents who desire to enroll their child in kindergarten prior to the legal entrance age of five years on or before September 1st of the calendar year that school starts. This policy also applies to parents who desire to enroll their child in the first grade prior to the legal entrance age of six years on or before September 1st of the calendar year that school starts. And so the state of Minnesota does have in statute the legal age to start school, and so this policy addresses that, and the district must have a policy that puts in place a process if there is to be a process, which we certainly do. And so that is the general gist of 551, but I will entertain any questions on that. Okay, hearing none. We move to 552. Homeless student enrollment dispute resolution procedures. The purpose of this policy is to assure the continuation of educational placement of a student in a homeless situation during a dispute. There were some minor modifications proposed in this policy, a little bit of gender cleanup from he, she, to they, and then also clarification on who our district's homeless liaison is, that is, the Director of Student Services, and then also clarifying that the district am, buds, person is the superintendent or designee. Any questions on 552 at all? Moving forward, 553, students with food allergies, special dietary needs. The purpose of this policy is as follows. The Monticello School District is dedicated to fostering the health, nutrition, and well-being of students with food allergies by providing education and supportive, in a supportive community. For anyone living with chronic health, with chronic health conditions requiring special dietary needs such as food allergies, the teaching and fostering of self-management skills is crucial to optimizing health and social normalcy. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance to the school district staff in these situations. Again, this is a Monticello-specific policy as well. There were some minor changes in this policy being proposed. Excuse me, one was to highlight that we have changed, we've recently modified the name of the Food Service Department to now Nutrition Services Department, and the Food Service Director is now known as the Director of Nutrition Services. And we also modified the timeline for implementing, for implementing change after the receipt of completed special dietary statements from 24 hours to within five business days. Any questions on 553?
Yeah, can you explain the timing change for implementation?
Yeah, it comes down to reasonability, and so just for nutrition services turnaround in order to actually implement a change which may require additional purchases of food items, having 24 hours in policy, that is, a specific Monticello policy, is quite restrictive. And so just trying to be reasonable and realistic in terms of what that turnaround time would be.
So was five days reasonable?
I believe so, as the policy liaison. Laura Whacker Hansen, nodding yes. And special assist tonight from the crowd, this is great. Any additional questions on 553? Okay, now we're to 560. This is another Monticello-specific policy. This is called restraint and seclusion. The purpose of this policy is to assure a safe school environment for students. There was one minor change within the narrative, just added the term statutes to the already present mandates, so just to make sure that we're covering statutes and mandates, because there is a distinction and difference from time to time, and then also the legal references we're missing from this policy as well. Any questions on 560? Okay, all right, now we're into the 600s. 601 is school district curriculum and instruction goals. The purpose of this policy is to establish broad curriculum parameters for the school district that encompasses the Minnesota academic standards and federal law and are aligned with, and this is one of the changes, the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. And so the crux of the changes that are being proposed in 601 really have to do with statute change from last spring, spring of '24, by the Minnesota Legislature, signed by the governor, that changes what was previously known as the world's best workforce to now the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness goals. And that is, like I said, the crux of the changes here. Any questions on 601? All right, and finally, we get to 602, last piece of our policy agenda tonight. This is the organization of school calendar and school day. The purpose of this policy is to provide for a timely determination of the school calendar and school day, and there were, if I have it correct here, Debbie, were there any changes on this one? I don't see any. Yeah, I don't see any, so for review only. Any questions on 602? Okay, and again, those are our policies for first read this evening. Chair Seaborn.
Thank you. All right, and that brings our meeting to adjourning on Monday, April 7th at 6:12 PM. Following this, we will have a work session, which will take a five-minute break and meet back in here in our next upcoming board meeting. It'll be April 21st at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM. All right, have a good evening, thanks for coming.